People in all walks of life who tackle impossible projects and succeed. Whether you're in an inner-city area, whether you're in a rural area, whether you're in America, or Africa, or China.
Good morning. Welcome to City Hall and welcome to the Council Chambers. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, September 15th, 2006. Council meets three times per week on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and all meetings are open to the public. For those of you that cannot make it to City Hall, our meetings are televised via Council on Channel 35, or it can be viewed by visiting our website. I'd again like to ask Councilmember Han, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson to make their way down to the City Council. I'd like to now introduce our President of the City Council for our first introduction. I know we also have the Mayor as part of this introduction. So, Council President Garcetti, would you like to begin this morning?
Thank you very much, Madam President, and we are going to be joined now by the Mayor and other Councilmembers in celebration of Latino Heritage Month here in Los Angeles. So with that, why don't we invite them in? While we are waiting for them, each year here in Los Angeles, we celebrate a common heritage, and here it comes! Thank you very much. Muchisimas gracias por la musica. We really enjoyed being able to celebrate and kick off Latino Heritage Month here. I know many of us up here joined the Mayor and our city elected officials just a week ago, a week and a half ago, to celebrate 225 years of history here in Los Angeles. Of the pobladores who came here from Baja California to Alta California to found that little pueblo known as Los Angeles. They were from Africa, Asia, Europe, and the Americas. The same heritage we have here today, all Latino representing people of every race, every ethnicity. And we celebrate that here today, the independence of five Latin American countries: Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, which celebrate their September 15th independence, and of course, Mexico's independence September 16th, and Chile's September 18th. In this month, though, we celebrate the history and the contributions of Latinos from around the country in the United States of America, in building literally this city and this country. Jose Uizar's grandfather, who built this building with other people. Our own parents and grandparents and great-grandparents who came here from other places. But with that, we'll hear from a number of people, but we first want to welcome the first Latino Mayor in 133 years in Los Angeles. And one of the original pobladores, I found out, was actually named Antonio Villa Vicencio. So, you know, he has some long history here as well. But a man who has defined what inclusiveness is about, and who has embodied that multicultural heritage of what being Latino is about. Please welcome the great Mayor of the City of Los Angeles, Antonio Villarreal.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Eric Garcetti, for your leadership. And it's exciting to be here with the City Council celebrating Latino Heritage Month, the opening. And let's give a big round of applause to Mariachi Divas. It's an honor to be here with the Council and our City Controller. I was gonna say controladora. Laura Chik, who's gonna, I understand, gonna be going back to Mexico to...
Study.
To study Spanish, which is great. And also, to be here with all of the people from Tebe, Azteca, and all of the community who are here today to celebrate Latino Heritage Month. I think Eric Garcetti said it very well. This is a great city, a diverse city, the most diverse anywhere in the United States of America, but with a very large influence, a Latino influence, and not just from Mexico, but from Central America and Latin America. And I believe that part of what makes Allee so unique is that influence, is the flavor that comes with the many cultures that we celebrate during Latino Heritage Month. And, you know, from my vantage point, as somebody who's been fortunate enough to be a first, the role of the first is to make sure there are others who come after you. And we celebrate Latino Heritage Month, our history, our culture, the many contributions of Latinos to the City of Los Angeles and to the nation. It's times like this, as I said yesterday at an event, that makes me feel proud to be an American of Mexican descent. Because we know that although we're proud Americans, we're also proud that our family came from Mexico and Central America, El Salvador, Guatemala, all the many countries that our parents come from, and they came here for a better life. And we believe that their contributions have been wonderful in terms of providing a great contribution, the values of family, of faith, of community that we bring. And so, today, we open Latino Heritage Month.
Quiero decir en español que es un honor estar aquí con ustedes y aunque no hablo muy perfectamente el español, me puedo defender. Y hoy estamos celebrando el mes de la gerencia latina, lo que es la influencia, las contribuciones de los latinos aquí en Los Ángeles. Y yo como el primero de descendencia mexicana en más de 133 años, tengo el orgullo, el honor, de representar a esta gran ciudad tan diversa, la ciudad más diversa en los Estados Unidos, y una ciudad donde la influencia mexicana y la influencia latina es muy grande. Como dijo el presidente del Consejo Municipal, Eric Garcetti, nosotros empecemos con 44 pobladores pioneros, no, que vinieron a Los Ángeles a más de 225 años. Y cuando vinieron, de los 44, 26 era de herencia africana. Había un Filipino, mestizos europeos, y lo que tenían en común fue una esperanza para una mejor vida. So, para mí es un honor abrir este mes, la apertura...
That's what happens when you talk too long. Eso es que pasa cuando estás hablando mucho. So now, I'd like to extend a special thank you that reminded me that I gotta get moving too. Ahora tengo el honor de extender las gracias a Walt Disney Company. It's now my honor to do a special thank you to the Walt Disney Company, the presenting sponsor for this wonderful event. If I can have Joan McCarthy, please join me. Yeah, Joan, why don't you come right over here. Joan was with us on the walk, and with Eric Garcetti. Eric Garcetti walked nine and a half miles, I want you to know. And she was with us on the walk, and so was the Walt Disney Company. And I can tell you, they've been very, very generous in helping us celebrate 225 years, our birthday, helping us celebrate Latino Heritage Month. As you know, it is a month of education, a month of art and culture, a month where we promote the diversity that is Los Angeles and the Latino contribution. So we want to thank the Walt Disney Company for their generosity, for their support, and for their dedication to diversity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And on behalf of Disney, I would like to present this check for $250,000 to the great City of Los Angeles to help bring arts, music, and culture to the people. Thank you.
I won't steal his joke. Councilmember Cardenas said, "That's no Mickey Mouse contribution." And he's right. Can we touch it?
Yes, you can. That's a nice big check.
Look at this. Nice big check. Come on, everybody. Touch this. Thank you very much to the Walt Disney Company. Wow. That's great. The whole year. Yeah, right. It's for the whole year. I also want to recognize ABC7 and Diane Medina for their support. Diane is there with us? There you go. And maybe I can bring up, have a certificate for Mariachi Divas as well, because they're always with us, by the way, every time we ask them. I get to walk in with the...
Viva la diva.
Viva la diva. Get in the picture, everybody. Come on, Zion. Get in the picture, Zion. Get your hand on the frame, or your hand on Laura Chik's shoulder. Okay. And then, you know, every year, as you know, for all of the months that we celebrate, we have a calendar, and this year's calendar designer is Ruben Esparsa, displaying three prominent artists: Yolanda Gonzalez, Miguel Anker Reyes, and Eriberto Luna. And if we could have them, please stand.
And we may need to move it so the cameras can get a picture of it, so we can see it on TV. Either move it in front of Jan Perry's seat up there. So I think, hopefully, the Channel 35 cameras can get that.
There we go. Thank you very much, and congratulations to you. Let me just say something real quickly about Ruben, about these wonderful individuals. Ruben Esparsa runs Red Studios, providing design services to clients like the National Hispanic Scholarship Fund, the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. Yolanda Gonzalez, many of you know, comes from a family of artists dating back to 1877, and for the last, she's not that old, of course, but her family is. For the past 24 years, she's exhibited and had her work collected extensively throughout Europe, Asia, Russia, Africa, and the United States. And Miguel Anker Reyes is a portrait and figurative painter, printmaker, mirrorless and illustrator. He's done work with Project Angel Food, AIDS Healthcare, and many others, and we thank all of you. Eriberto Luna, also known internationally for his vibrancy and color, and we thank you all for participating. And now, with my friends on the City Council, I'd like to proclaim today, September 15th, 2006, the opening of Latino Heritage Month. Tonight, Councilmember Cardenas is going to be hosting us for El Grito. And I'm here, by the way, with Ruben Beltrán, the Council General of Mexico, who's here with us. And let me say...
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We have some, you know it's an important day when we have basically every elected official in the City of Los Angeles here, and we're very proud to have them here in Council Chambers and welcome them. We will hear from each one of them now for a minute or so. First, from our city attorney, Rocky Delgado, and then Laura Chica, which is what I'm gonna call her, our City Controller. But first, welcome, Rocky Delgado.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I have two very important connections to today and this month. One rooted in history. Back in the, today is the Grito, El Grito, 15th of September. Back in 1810, it was a small group directed by Father Hidalgo, Father Hidalgo, and Doña Josefa Ortiz de Dominguez. Very important. She was the wife of the city attorney, who started this great movement. So you should know where my wife is at this point. Make sure we're keeping track of her. The second connection is this. When I worked for Mayor Riordan, I chaired Latino Heritage Month for several years, and I hope that I helped bring it to the level it is today, a great celebration of culture. One of the things that we did during that celebration was to have a party on the Sixth Street Bridge, because that bridge connected the historic part, Latino part of Los Angeles, East Los Angeles, to the rest of the city, and some would say to the rest of the world. It also was a message to the future of the City of Los Angeles, that every community should reach across the bridge, walk across the bridge, reach out across the bridge to different cultures, because that's what Los Angeles is all about, is teaching each other to bridge communities. And I'm proud to be a part of that. I'm proud to stand here with our fellow elected officials to proclaim Latino Heritage Month and a much more beautiful future for the City of Angels. Thank you very much.
It's really Laurita Chica. Anyway, me da mucho placer estar aquí hoy porque mi alma es latina. And my cultural heritage, because I live in Los Angeles, is also Latino, because I'm a part of the city and a member of the city. So I'm very proud to be here with my authentically Latino colleagues and others and all of you, and party on. It's an important occasion to celebrate. Thank you.
We'll be hearing in the next presentation in greater detail, but El Padrino, the person who, with his staff, has done an incredible job in organizing the festivities. We invite all Angelenos to this evening out on Spring Street. Is a Councilmember who, before he came here, distinguished himself in the California State Assembly, and who's taken on the leadership role this year of being in charge of the entire El Grito Festivity. So it gives me a great honor to welcome, for a few words as well, Councilmember Tony Cardenas.
In this portion of the presentation about Latino Heritage Month, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the people of Los Angeles for making this month of festivities, this month of cultural heritage from the Latino community, for participating. When you look back at this month, after the next 30 days, you're gonna see so many people enlightened, you're gonna see so many people in wonder and awe at the fact that we are surrounded by so much culture, and there's so much beauty in that culture. And I just wanted to thank the Mayor, and also everyone who's been a part of this for so many years, for making Los Angeles such a central focal point for the heritage of the Latino community, from Mexico, Central America, South America, and all of this wonderful, wonderful culture that Los Angeles is the second-largest city in the world when it comes to Mexican people and people of Mexican heritage. And I think it's only fitting that the City of Los Angeles put that heritage on the map for these 30 days. So once again, thank you, Mayor, thank you to all the staff, and to the participants, the people of Los Angeles, for making it such a wonderful month. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce from the First Council District, a native Angeleno, but a proud Latino, somebody who represents the First Council District, Eduardo Reyes.
I just want to take this moment to thank everyone who's given all the young people a moment in time to understand the richness of their culture, their music, their food, their song, to be able to provide that base of pride, that sense of identity that can allow them to understand that they have many options in this great country as Americans. As a son of immigrants, I understand how hard we work, what we've contributed to this economy, to this great country, and to have this great stage, let the whole world know how great we can be as one community, is truly something to celebrate. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tony Cardenas. Thank all of you for allowing our young people to understand the importance of their background, their culture, and the greatness of their future. Thank you very much.
And I know we were joined earlier by Councilmember Rosendahl. Thank you for your presence. We are also, oh, you're gonna speak? Okay. And Councilmember Zion as well, but I wanted to ask the Councilmember from the Ninth District who's going to be celebrating with us tonight. And we'll hear, as I mentioned before, about El Grito in a second, but a woman who also speaks Spanish and has a very sizable Latino population in her district. Please welcome the Councilwoman from the Ninth District, our Assistant President Pro Tem, Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. When we talk about diversity here in Los Angeles, I'm pleased that the new Council General from the wonderful country of Japan is here today in the chamber, Mr. Kodama, Council General Kodama, to also enjoy and celebrate independence of the beautiful country of Mexico today and this evening. I believe it's so important to share this with all the young people, not only of our country, but the city, as our lives are inextricably intertwined with the history of the country of Mexico. And also, as I said earlier at the reception, to welcome back our dear friend and sister Natalie Reyes, who is now with Azteca America, Azteca America. Welcome her back home to City Hall, and to say what a wonderful opportunity it is for us to be able to work with her again. And again, see all of you this evening, not only on television, but I hope you'll be there enjoying the celebration. And thank you again to the Mayor and the President for organizing the event today.
We're going to move to a presentation of El Grito, but I know there may be some other members who wish to speak, but again, want to thank everybody and thank the Mayor's staff for their very hard work on Latino Heritage Month. And after we hear from a couple of the people, we'll turn it over to Tony Cardenas to tell us about El Grito for this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rosendahl.
I just wanted to come back to my seat, because this is where I'm at, but I gotta tell you, I started a Mexican Heritage Month and Latin American Heritage Month last month when I went down to Puerto Vallarta, one of the great cities in Mexico. Happy Latino Month. Thank you.
Mr. Parks. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd also like to thank the Mayor for putting a great deal of emphasis in a very important event. Having been a part of this city most of my life and seeing the struggles of minorities that we often don't see their accomplishments in our history books, but yet we know how much we rely on them as it relates to the culture, the employment, the variety of things that they bring, the richness to this city. And I think it is so important that we have these kinds of events, whether it's Agent Pacific Heritage Month or Back History Month, but again, to highlight in the community, which we take for granted sometimes, the diversity, the language skills, 100-plus languages in this community. And what I've often said in many of the speeches I've given, is that we have the largest number of ethnic minorities in each group in the world other than in their home country. And I said that one day in a meet, in a speech, and a person raised their hand and said, "You have more Samoans in Los Angeles area than they are in Samoa." So we may take the first lead there, but it is important to understand that and not get so used to it that we don't highlight it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
As probably our biggest single event for Latino Heritage Month, each year, a different member of the City Council's in charge of putting together the Party for El Grito, which you'll hear more about in a second. My colleague who is overseeing that this year is Councilmember Tony Cardenas. He had quite a few, quite a few less gray hairs when he started this, I'm sure. He didn't have a goatee, I know for sure, when he started this. And he's somebody who, with his staff, has been working tirelessly around the clock with our city staff to make this an incredible signature fiesta that is something that goes on simultaneously in Mexico and in Los Angeles. So please welcome to speak about the celebration of El Grito, Councilmember Tony Cardenas.
The Mariachi Divas are going to do one more song for us before we move into the El Grito celebration discussion. before we move into the El Grito celebration discussion. Once again, that was Mariachi Divas, ladies and gentlemen. And I know several of the members of this mariachi group, and they are certainly a Los Angeles group of young, talented individuals who make us very, very proud. And once again, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor for being with us this morning and kicking off the Latino Heritage Month. And also, I was talking to the mayor right now, and they're expecting him upstairs in a reception, correct? So I just wanted to say thank you so much, mayor, for being with us today and thank you for kicking off such a wonderful event. Typical moment for the mayor. They want him in five different places at once. Good luck today, mayor. Good morning, everyone. I'm Councilman Tony Cardenas, and I'm very, very proud to chair this year's El Grito celebration, El Grito de Dolores, as it's called, which began on the night of September 15th in 1810, where Father Miguel Hidalgo stood at his church in Dolores, Juanahuato, Mexico, and called the townspeople to rise in arms against the Spanish government. The battle for independence began the following morning, and 11 years later, Mexico became an independent nation. Each year on September 15th, the president of Mexico rings the bell, rung by Father Hidalgo, to commemorate what is now known as El Grito de Dolores, the independence battle cry. Similarly, in Los Angeles, a representative of the president of Mexico reenacts this historical ceremony, the cry. The cry for equality, for dignity, for independence. That's what we honor here tonight in the city of Los Angeles as we celebrate Mexico's independence from Spain and the hope for democracy, which they were able to achieve. And we, as Americans, can appreciate that as much as anyone on earth. So why celebrate this here in Los Angeles? The main reason, the real reason why we must and we should and we do celebrate this in Los Angeles is because the city of Los Angeles is the city with more Mexicans and Mexicans of descent than any other city except Mexico City, Mexico. That's right. Just like myself, the son of Mexican immigrants, there are more people in the city of Los Angeles with that heritage than any other place on earth outside of this greatest city in Mexico, Mexico City, Mexico. I think it's important for us to reflect today on the fact that the city of Los Angeles celebrates many wonderful cultures. No ruse, we celebrate a day where we recognize the Irish. There are many, many celebrations in this city because we are such a diverse city. And I think it's apparently evident that the city of Los Angeles is a diverse city and a responsible city in that we welcome, we respect, and we celebrate so many cultures like we are today. As I mentioned, I'm the son of immigrants, and I'm very proud to say that my humble parents would have never dreamed, although they are not here with us anymore, they would have never dreamed that their youngest son, that any of their children would have become a council member or would have had the honor, like I have today, to chair this wonderful event. I share the hopes and dreams of my parents, and I share the hopes and dreams of every person in Mexico, every person in this country who understands and appreciates the freedom that was fought for and the democracy that is now the country of Mexico and the country of the United States. We have much in common with Mexico, and tonight we have the opportunity to celebrate this wonderful day with our neighbors to the south, Mexico, in celebrating their independence and to do it not only for the people of Mexico, but to remember that we are a wonderful, diverse city. And the responsible thing to do is to recognize this diversity and to celebrate together and to welcome this celebration and to enjoy it in its fullest. At this moment in time, I'd like to welcome to the podium someone that we're going to give a resolution today to, but someone who is... Well, technically, you're not a son of Los Angeles, but you definitely are a brother, as you are someone that we love and we cherish and someone that we've all grown to know and someone who represents Mexico very, very well, which is the Consul General de México, our friend and our brother, Ruben Beltran.
Very briefly, very briefly, the only words I have to say to the city council is gracias. Gracias a Los Angeles. Thank you, Los Angeles. We take this gesture as a friendship, as a gesture of friendship, a gesture of solidarity, and a sign that we share values of democracy, values of being a country which is independent and has its own route and its own destiny. But I would like really to appreciate the leadership of Tony Cardenas in the celebration of this year's Grito and thank all the city councils of their generosity and their solidarity. I'm very proud to be here. I'm very proud to be here in Los Angeles, embracing all the diversity of Los Angeles. Mexico as well is a very diverse country. This diversity left Sonora years ago, almost 230 years ago, they founded San Gabriel. And from San Gabriel, they came here to found Los Angeles. It was a very diverse group, and we're here in a very diverse, maybe the most diverse city in all the world. So thank you, Los Angeles. Thank you, Los Angeles, for their generosity. Thank you, Los Angeles, for their generosity and solidarity. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Consul Beltran, we give this resolution on behalf of the city of Los Angeles on this Dia de Independencia de México 2006. Thank you so much for your generosity of time and your generosity of love to the people of Los Angeles and to this wonderful city and also for being the consummate professional. The ceremony tonight is, what, 14 minutes and exactly how many seconds?
Thirty-four.
And you perform it perfectly. And once again, we'll demonstrate that tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize a wonderful group of volunteers. They call themselves El Comité Mexicano Civico Patriótico de Los Ángeles. And they are as much a part of the activities and the spirit and the wonderful event that we're going to experience tonight on the steps of City Hall, reenacting that wonderful day, that cry, that battle cry of Dolores that started the independence and culminated in the independence of Mexico. And with that, I'd like to invite to the podium one of their representatives, Enidino Aguirre. Is Enidino? Okay. Aquí señor. I'd like to invite him to the podium to share a few words about the comité and about the significance of this evening and about their commitment. Their commitment has been going on here in Los Angeles formally for 75 years. And today, we have the opportunity, the city of Los Angeles will present them with a certificate for their 75 years of dedication to the people, not just the mexicanos, but to all of Los Angeles. Enidino, por favor.
Muy buenos días, tenga a todos ustedes. A nombre del presidente del comité mexicano, el señor Don Samuel Magaña, que por fuerzas mayores no tuvo que salir. Se le murió un familiar. Y estamos aquí en su representación. A nombre del comité mexicano civico patriótico, de los socios del comité mexicano civico patriótico, y en el mío propio, les damos las gracias. Muy calurosas al circo, a las autoridades, al señor, al gran presidente que tenemos ahora, el señor Antonio Villarrealgoza, al señor Tony Cardenas, gran amigo, al señor Ed Reyes, al señor Garcetti, al señor Delgado, a José Huizar, a toditos. Un millón de gracias.
Million thank you.
Sí, cómo no. El comité mexicano civico patriótico tiene 75 años de haberse fundado.
Been in existence for 75 years.
Fue fundado para celebrar las fiestas patrias de México.
He was founded in order to celebrate this day of independence.
Hace 75 años, de los cuales, pues algunos, yo, por ejemplo, tengo 25 años en el comité.
It's been 75 years since it's been founded, and I've been part of the committee for about 25 years.
Un día en una junta que tuvimos en el comité mexicano, alguien preguntó...
One day in one of the meetings we attended at this...
Que cuántos ex-presidentes el comité mexicano había.
Someone asked how many ex-presidents existed for this committee.
Entonces yo se los mencioné, y algunos de los socios, pues les dio risa porque como fue fundado hace 75 años. Alguien dijo que todavía vivíamos algunos, unos tontos y otros vivos, pero que todos comíamos.
Some died, but still we were hoping to eat.
Y bueno, fue un cascarillo de algunos, los socios. Ya por último, debo agradecer nuevamente a todos los socios que están aquí, algunos. Puedo mencionar, si no se me escapa alguno, por favor, discúlpeme. Al señor Ángeles, primer ex-presidente.
Mr. Ángeles, he's a current president.
Está el señor Jesús González.
Mr. Jesús González is also present with us.
Moreno González. El señor Don Manuel Gauna Prado.
Mr. Don Manuel Calguapado.
El señor Hoyos, Rubén Hoyos.
Mr. Rubén Hoyos is also present.
En fin, este... El señor, perdón, el señor Don Agustín Barragan es presidente también del comité mexicano. Y bueno, pues a nombre de todos nosotros...
Finally, on behalf of all of us, we want to... Thank you. I think I'm forgetting a name of one of the members.
Jorge Fernández se me había escapado, y no quería...
I'm sorry. I forgot his name, but it wasn't intentional.
Gracias, señor Cardenas. Muy amable.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
With that, I'd like to once again welcome everyone to celebrate with us tonight on the steps of City Hall. And also remember that our colleagues on the council, every one of us. This is a council-sponsored event, and I want to thank all of my colleagues for all the support that you've given us in this year's celebration. Specifically, Ed Reyes, who abandoned me and he shaved today. Alex Badia, Eric Garcetti, José Huizar. Special thanks to them, as they've been intimately involved in this as well. And Jan Perry. Jan Perry is our honorary Latina on the council. Sister Perry, hermana. And also, I need to take a few seconds to thank an organization that stepped up tremendously. Our title sponsor this year is Singular, and they have done a wonderful job, and they've worked very closely with the city to make sure that tonight's event is going to go off wonderfully. And once again, Teve Azteca, thank you so much for all of your support in tonight's event. Thank you, President Garcetti, and we'll look forward to seeing all of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge... Mr. Garcetti, are you ready to do your next presentation?
We'll do it right after.
Right after Mr. Zion. Mr. Zion?
Thank you. Anthony Chapa, Tony Chapa. Come forward, please. Council President Garcetti is going to join me in this presentation. Tony has been a friend since he arrived here. It seems like yesterday we welcomed you to Los Angeles. And this smiling face is being promoted. Can be the Deputy Assistant Director, Officer Protective Research in Washington DC for the United States Secret Service. Tony Chapa started as a police officer in Texas. He is currently a special agent in charge of the Los Angeles Office of United States Secret Service. In 1982, was a police officer in San Antonio Police Department. Began his career at the United States Secret Service in 1986, assigned to the Los Angeles office. Later served in San Antonio, Texas, field office as a polygraph examiner. So no one ever lies to Tony. In 1992, he was transferred to the Washington DC field office, and in 1994 through 1998, was assigned to the vice presidential protection detail, protecting the Vice President of the United States on all of his travels. 1998, 2001, served as the resident agent in charge of U.S. Embassy in Bogota, Colombia. Later served as the deputy special agent in charge and special agent in charge of counterfeit division headquarters in Washington DC through 2002. Appointed to senior executive service and special agent in charge of Los Angeles Field Office in 2004. And that's when I met Tony. Assigned to senior executive special service office in 2004. And again, Tony, it seems like yesterday. Served in diplomatic and foreign protective assignments in the United States Presidents Bush, Clinton, Bush Senior, and Reagan. Been recognized with several honors, including being the first recipient of the director's distinguished service award and the National Association Police Organization's NAPO as part of its top cop award for outstanding achievement in law enforcement. Tony was selected by a United States Secret Service director, Mark Sullivan, to serve as Deputy Assistant Director, Office of Protective Research in Washington DC. The Office of Protective Research provides oversight and direction to the Secret Service Intelligence Division, Tactical Services Division, Information Resource Management Division, National Threat Assessment Center, and the Emergency Management Program. Tony is also designated as the chief technology officer for the United States Secret Service. He'll begin his new assignment in October 2006. Los Angeles City Council hereby congratulates you, Tony, on your selection to serve as Deputy Assistant Director, Officer of Protective Research in Washington DC and for your accomplishments and commitment to the Department of Homeland Security. And I know you're not just a man who sits behind a desk shuffling papers. When Prime Minister Blair was here, there was a visit here in the city of Los Angeles, and there you were, at the Getty, making sure that everything was safe for the prime minister and all the invited guests. So on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council... So on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, the people of Los Angeles, we have a plaque that hopefully will be placed in your Washington DC office. I attend conferences there once a year for National Cities now will be coming by to visiting and seeing you and making sure things are going well in Washington DC. But on behalf of all the people of Los Angeles, we're going to miss you. You've been a friend to a lot of people, you've really blended law enforcement with homeland security and all the threats and all the concerns and all the issues. You're a cop at heart, and with the United States Secret Service protecting people in this country. So congratulations on the promotion. From the people of Los Angeles, you fell into it. And Eric Garcetti, Council President.
Just, I think you said it all, it's an amazing career and something we depend on here. We've had secretaries general here, we've had presidents in these chambers, we've had so many incredible diplomats, heads of states and others. And without the Secret Service, protecting not only our own elected officials, but also those who come and visit us from abroad, we certainly couldn't protect the democracy that we have, and so we want to thank you. And I know with that, you will consider that your key to the city whenever you want to come back to Los Angeles, and we welcome you here back and wish you safe voyages in Washington DC.
Thank you. And let me just add, there was a farewell party recently, and I thought it was a retirement party. It was absolutely, Ron, you were there along with everybody else, the sheriff of the county was there, representatives of the police department, and it was like a retirement, but it's not a retirement, it's just another position in your life of law enforcement, protecting people. So God bless you, we wish you and your family well. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Before we do the next presentation, I am, we're going to ask Madam Clerk if you could call the roll, we'll go through the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Cardenas, Grohan, Huizar, Labonge, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl Smith, Vice Western, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present in the corner, Madam President.
Thank you. First item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those have been approved.
First items on the agenda, Madam President, are items noticed for public hearings, items one through seven, and the recommendation for council action would be to open the hearing and continue the hearing and ordinances to October 6th.
Unless I hear it differently, that will be the order.
Next item on the agenda are items for which public hearings have been held, items eight through 13. On item number eight, there is an amending motion that has been distributed to the council members. Item 11, a report has been submitted, and item 13, there are two reports on the file, and if council wishes, it can adopt both.
Yes, any specials, Mr. Parks?
On number eight, we moved the amendment, just adding additional responsibility to the city attorney, and then, I mean, I'm sorry, the CAO, and also we moved the T Committee report on 13.
Thank you for that on the T Committee. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 14 through 25, 10 votes are required for consideration. On 15, there is a request from the Bureau of Street Lighting to receive and file that matter.
Any specials, colleagues? We do have cards on 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25, those will be called special based on the cards. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Those items have been approved.
Okay, and that would conclude the regular meeting, Madam President.
We will go back to the presentations, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti for our next presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and what's a very exciting day here in Los Angeles, and we had to make sure that our friend from the Secret Service got off and got on a plane to do his work as a Secret Service agent. But keeping with the theme of the first two presentations, we're also celebrating a very unique first day here in Los Angeles. Celebramos el Dia de Azteca América, the Azteca America Day, which is, for those of you who know, in Mexico, one of the two great television channels, networks, and part of an incredible company in Mexico that moved its headquarters here to Los Angeles for Azteca América, because Los Angeles is the center, not only of Latino culture, but it's the center of culture for the world, with Hollywood, with our television, our movies, and our media industry that is here. And we thought it was only fitting because we celebrate that confidence that Azteca América has in Los Angeles, to thank them as well by declaring this day here, this day in September, Azteca América Day. And Councilmember Toni Cardenas and I wanted to say a few things, and we want to be joined also by Tom Labonge, to speak about some of the good work that Azteca América is doing as well in Los Angeles. Brevemente en español, la ciudad de Los Ángeles es una ciudad latina. Es una ciudad con una historia muy fuerte y una economía muy fuerte. Pero somos una ciudad de negociantes, de trabajadores, de personas que tienen los sueños aquí en Los Ángeles. We are a city here in Los Angeles of business people, of workers, and those who have dreams here to create something. And we welcome new businesses here because Los Angeles is, we believe, the most business-friendly city in the country. We want businesses here, we've led the way with business tax reform, we have shown that we will get out of the way, cut the red tape, in order to keep and have those jobs here. And Azteca América has such a high quality of product, whether it's their news, their programming, their sports, that we wanted to thank them for being here and celebrate this day today. So with that, I want to turn over to Councilmember Cardenas to also welcome them, and Councilmember Labonge, and we're very, very pleased to have the dynamic and incredibly kind of visionary leader, Chairman Luis Echarte, who is here to speak as well about the plans of Azteca América and the way that they can grow here in Los Angeles, and in doing so, provide an amazing service to the people of Los Angeles while at the same time strengthening our economy. So please welcome again Toni Cardenas.
Thank you very much, President Garcetti. It gives me great pleasure to remind all of us about Azteca América and what they represent. As I said earlier, my parents are from Mexico, and I want to say that when I look at the card of Luis Echarte, and it says Azteca América, Azteca, the Aztecs, it was one of the most tremendous, profound civilizations that was cutting edge. And as an engineer, I must remind everyone, the first civilization in the world that recorded the concept of zero, and I know I'm boring you, but as an engineer, this is exciting stuff. The concept of zero, something that you and I use all the time. Hopefully, when we're talking about our checkbooks, there's a number before that zero, but the concept of zero is something scientific, and the Aztecs were the first community to ever record the concept of zero and explain it in humankind terms ever in this history of this world. So with that, I'd like to say that Azteca América, thank you for investing in Los Angeles. Thank you for coming to Los Angeles and elevating your game, and elevating your presence, and increasing the employment, and increasing your ability to give quality news, quality programming for all of the people of Los Angeles. But the wonderful thing about it, as I was talking to Chairman Echarte a little while ago, is that this is going to be the headquarters for Azteca América for the United States, Los Angeles. That is an exciting day for the city of Los Angeles, as all too often people talk about the examples of yesterday, where many companies headquartered here in Los Angeles, but they don't anymore. Well, I consider it a renaissance. I look forward to the day that we come to the city council like today and welcome and thank and celebrate wonderful companies like Azteca América, who are calling this their headquarters, calling this place their home, and doing wonderful things for the hard-working families that give to their businesses and give their work every single day. So thank you, Luis Echarte, for your decision, thank you for your commitment, and welcome to the city of Los Angeles in a presence that Azteca América has not had in the past, but a presence that we're all going to enjoy for many decades to come. Thank you. Now, Tom?
Thank you very much, Tony. Looking forward to see a lot of you this weekend, Tony, as you lead the way, and it's wonderful, and I appreciate following you. I'd like to ask that Fontaine Holmes, our great librarian, join with you up here. Luis, you've done a wonderful thing, Azteca América, and a partnership with the Los Angeles Library System to get young people and all people to libraries, which are the greatest source of knowledge and information. I'd ask Fontaine to say a few brief words about this program.
Thank you. Congratulations to the Council General of Mexico, to Mexico, to Los Angeles, and to Azteca América TV. We are celebrating Latino Heritage Month at the Central Library and at the 71 branches of the Los Angeles Public Library, every day this month and beyond throughout the city of Los Angeles, with programs for children and families and everyone in Los Angeles. And I want to tell you, we work with all of the communities in Los Angeles, we have many wonderful partners, but I am absolutely amazed at TV Azteca América. They moved here, they had not even unpacked all their boxes when they reached out to the Los Angeles Public Library to partner with us to provide programs for children to read in English and to read in Spanish. And we are very happy to start this program. I want to thank the Chair, Luis Echarte, and Natalie Reyes. And we are starting our programs this Saturday at the El Sarino Branch Library, and we will be reading with many TV personalities to the children and their families and celebrate Latino Heritage Month. And I want to thank you and congratulate you, and I also want to invite you all, beginning September 30th, we will be opening El Puero Muerto, a major art exhibit at the Los Angeles Public Library, to continue the celebration of Latino Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Fontaine, very much. Luis Echarte, you're an angel in the city of angels, we thank you for that, and give you another big hand, Azteca América, for this great partnership with the library.
Thank you. I'd like to, Mr. Rosendahl would like to say a few words.
And hold on just a second, Billy Boy. Ruben, this Council General here, I just wanted to take a moment since I'm at the mic to salute. Our city, we talk about our great diversity, but no city next to New York, which is the head of the United Nations, and Hong Kong has the home of more conflicts. And Ruben, you represent your country well, I'm very proud of you and grateful for your frame. Shabruel Beltrán, the Council General of Mexico, please.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been wearing my Azteca hat, folks, as you can see, and it's Azteca América. And I want you to know, well, many of you might know, I was a cable guy for a certain period of time, like 22 years, and I really wanted Azteca to come on the cable lineups throughout the country. And frankly, I dealt with my corporate execs about it and made it a big issue. Why? Because what it did in Mexico as a channel and then bringing it over here is incredibly wholesome and culturally enriching and entertainment-full and a tremendous product. And now that, here I am, sitting on the other side of the world there in a council spot, the fact that we are honoring the fact that you're coming to Los Angeles is an absolutely beautiful way to start off Latino Heritage Month, because that channel not only will be a huge success, it will empower and connect people to the political and social issues of the day, it will be a tremendous boost to not only the Latino community, but to all of us. And I just want to congratulate Azteca América for taking the fortitude, going hard, and now, you know, you'll be on the cable lineups, and we'll fight hard for everything to make that happen. You'll also go on the telephone companies' lineups once they get it together, and the satellite people I know already have you in certain spots. Everybody needs to have Azteca so that the community has the choice of getting that channel. Hats off to you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I like my bald friend over there wearing my Azteca América hat. Bill, thank you, it helps us in the sun, right? That's it. I want to welcome you to Los Angeles also, Natalie Reyes, a familiar face here at City Hall, wonderful connections, a wonderful ambassador. We wish you well in the environment, the population loves television. Ruben, you know, everyone loves television and everyone loves soccer. So with that combination, everyone will have a wonderful time. And Tony, thank you, the diversity of this city is so wonderful to have, and we are such a diverse city, to add this component is a benefit to all Angelenos. So God bless you and thank you for investing in LA. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, council members. And once again, it gives me great pleasure to say a few more words about Azteca América, but specifically about their chairman, Luis Echarte. Earlier, I dubbed him, I gave him a nickname, Echale. That's a word that we use in slang in Spanish to say, "Go get 'em, go do it." It's a go-getter word. And I'd just like to say to Luis, thank you so much once again for investing in Los Angeles. Chairman, thank you so much for your board and the decision that you've made to invest in Los Angeles. And I said earlier, it is going to be a wonderful relationship. It's going to be something that's going to fulfill the people and the community of Los Angeles and this country, and it's going to be great to see the investments you're making, and you're making that investment today. This evening, our El Grito celebration, this is one of our major sponsors. Azteca América has stepped up, like most companies, when you're headquartered somewhere, you invest there. So they are putting their money where their mouth is, they're putting into the community, and they're doing it quicker than almost any company I've ever seen in the past. So congratulations, Felicidades, and welcome. And before we give you your certificate, we'd just like to give you a chance to say a few words.
And before he gets to speak, we have two other council members that have pushed their button, Councilmember Han, followed by Councilmember Reyes.
I just wanted to say, welcome to Los Angeles. It's great that a Mexican company has come and invested here in Los Angeles. It's so important that you're here, and we have, corporate America is leaving Los Angeles many times, and they're moving their headquarters from Los Angeles, so it is really important and means a lot to us that you have decided to locate here in Los Angeles. The best move you ever did was to hire Natalie Reyes. Best move you ever did. Natalie is loved, respected, not only here, but certainly internationally, and so that means a lot to us that she is now a part of the company. So welcome, it will be a great relationship, and we appreciate you providing good television for Angelenos. I just got interviewed by Azteca América on 9/11 after our ceremony on Monday morning, so thank you for coming here, and we wish you well and success. And I want to talk to you more about what we were talking about on the bench, the port of Los Angeles, the international trade industry, and how important it is, particularly between Los Angeles and Mexico.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
I just also want to rise and thank Azteca América, Azteca Television, for being here. It's important to have that competitive spirit. This country is based in competition, more than half of the community here in Los Angeles has a Spanish surname. The predominant language in the western hemisphere is Spanish. So when you go south of Texas, you do enter a whole other world. So those of us who had the opportunity to travel understand the incredible opportunity we have here in Los Angeles as a diverse city. And Azteca is taking that step to compete in the airwaves, in production, in shows, in messages, in public service. Now, LA is hiring an amazing event the end of this month to bring up the voter base. And so as we are able to articulate those messages, we have more participation in our voters, more democracy, and you played an incredible role in that regard, and I want to thank you for all you've done for this city. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, I'm really honored by all these beautiful words by all of you, and welcome was here, especially President Garcetti, Councilmember Labonge, Toni Cardenas, and of course, our friend, our Council General, Council here has been such a good representative of our people and our nation in this country of ours. I'm honored to be here specifically this day, in which we kick off the Hispanic Heritage Day, the Day of El Grito, and actually, you are honoring us by celebrating the roots of us establishing here in Los Angeles as Grupo Salinas and Azteca América. Although the operations of Grupo Salinas, which includes the LA-based national television network of Azteca América, and the cross-border cellular services of Azteca Mobile are quite new with us in this country, I think it's important, and I would like to explain to you a little bit about who we are and where we come from, and basically, we bring about 100 years of services and innovation with our parent Mexican company, Grupo Salinas, which started 100 years ago selling furniture in Monterrey and employs today 50,000 people in countries such as Mexico, US, Guatemala, Salvador, Honduras, Panama, and Peru. And we're going to continue to grow towards the south and towards the north. We have revenues of over $5 billion a year in operations in media, retail, financial services, bank, telecommunications, and internet services. Azteca América... Azteca America's parent company, TV Azteca, is the second-largest producer of Hispanic-language television program in the world, and we sell programs in 80 countries. Grupo Lectra is the largest specialty retailer in Mexico with over 1,000 stores. Our Banco Azteca, which we're very proud of, started about three years ago, is the first bank to focus on Mexican working class and has 1,400 branches and over 7 million clients. Most of them are micro credits, so credits for less than $3,000. In 2001, we decided to export our success in television to this country, and we started with a little station here in Los Angeles, 2001. Today, five years later, we're 52 stations throughout the country. We reach 88% of the Hispanic communities across this country, and I'm proud to say that we're the only Spanish television network operating here owned and operated by Latinos. We have about 5,000 employees. But as we receive from the communities the opportunity to serve them, we also are committed to give back. And with our mission and the Fundación Azteca America, a nonprofit organization, we model through the foundation Azteca in Mexico, which is a very successful fundación, and we use and partner with nonprofit organizations throughout the country to expose them and use their television screen to educate, raise funds, and create awareness. To date, we've launched PSA campaigns, issues on many of the things that are plaguing the Hispanic community, domestic violence, drinking and driving, drug abuse, and issues of personal importance to all of us here, and particularly to us in Azteca America, which is civic participation and the Spanish people to go out and vote. We care about this city, and we are too now Angelinos, and I think we made the right move seeing the beautiful mariachi that you put forth here today. And we are very happy to partner with the Public Library, as you heard, and also we're doing something with L.A. County Department of Children's Family Services, a lot of PSAs, and also special news reports to make awareness of the situation for the Hispanic children and family problems and the Hispanic in this county. This is only the beginning. The sky is the limit. We're grateful for the opportunities that Los Angeles and the rest of this country has given us to broadcast and to promote to our communities. Thank you, all of you here. Thank you to the city of Los Angeles. And I think I would like to start tonight, today, with a tradition, and I'd like you to join me, to say, "Viva la Ciudad de Los Angeles."
Viva.
Viva the United States of America.
Viva.
And viva the heritage of all our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation is by Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I also want to recognize a very special group of young leaders from Council District 9. They are here today from 66th Street Elementary School. I want them to stand up so their parents can see them tonight on TV. And they are here with their teachers, Shia Johnson, Jamila Gaston, and Shelby Rogers. And they are participating in the Deloitte Academy, and that's why they're here at City Hall today. This morning, they were exposed to Deloitte professionals in a variety of different fields, including audit, tax, and consulting in a business setting to help the students envision their future and opportunities for success. They also conducted interactive workshops on ethics and are here now to observe another real-world example of civic duty and community leadership through our council meetings. So thank you to Deloitte and all the teachers, Johnson, Gaston, and Rogers, for bringing the kids down here today. Wave, somebody can see you. And thank you to all the kids and their families from 66th Street Elementary School. And thank you, Deloitte, for your investment in the Leaders of Tomorrow. So thank you. I have two presentations, Madam Chair. First is with Kaiser Permanente. And we are joined here by Diana Bonta and Dr. Gregerson. The Council is well aware of the very complicated issue of homelessness that we face in our city and state, and the challenges, and that issue challenges our skills and creativity to help our fellow residents, individuals, and families find hope, help, and a better quality of life. Kaiser Permanente does have a long history of supporting and partnering with community-based organizations such as community clinics to expand access to health care for the city's most vulnerable residents. This year, Kaiser Permanente has expanded that partnership to address the special health care needs of homeless people in Los Angeles. And we are here today to acknowledge and celebrate the approximately $950,000 in funding that Kaiser Permanente has directed to local service agencies and public-private partnerships for services to homeless people in need. These grants represent more than money, as Kaiser Permanente also continues to partner and collaborate with each of the important community organizations that are presented here today. The partners include the Community Clinic Association of Los Angeles County, receiving a $300,000 grant for chronic disease management training, Homeless Health Care Los Angeles, and the County of Los Angeles Department of Health Services, $265,000 grant to train hospital discharge planners in partnership with Kaiser Permanente, JWCH Institute, $125,000 grant to support their recuperative health program, the Lamp Community, $40,000 grant to expand mental health programs, the Los Angeles Coalition to End Hunger and Homelessness, $40,000 grant, the Los Angeles Mission Community Clinic, $61,000 grant to increase access to services at 11 sites, and the Tarzana Treatment Centers, $122,000 grant to provide additional staff with training in discharge services. Kaiser Permanente understands the complexity of meeting the health care needs of the homeless. And the city of Los Angeles will continue to work on this complicated interweaving of issues that make up the challenge in collaboration with our social service providers and committed partners like Kaiser Permanente. So I want to thank Kaiser Permanente, not only for the financial resources, but for their deep involvement and the involvement of their staff in working with other organizations in organizing targeted responses. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I would like to present Kaiser Permanente in recognition of these contributions, as well as leadership in working with other community health providers in meeting the medical needs of homeless residents here in the city of Los Angeles. And joining us today from Kaiser Permanente, again, Diana Bonta. She is the Vice President for Public Affairs for Southern California. Angela Corone, Director of Community Benefit, and Cody Rued Flores, Community Benefit Project Manager, focusing on partnerships with community clinics and homeless providers. I think we have a number of people, I'll just say their names very quickly. Homeless Health Care, Eve Rubele, and Marcia Temple. Los Angeles County Department of Health Services, Libby Vois. JWCH Institute, Dr. Paul Gregerson. Tarzana Treatment Centers, Jose Salazar. Los Angeles Mission Community Clinic, Eddie Estrada. Los Angeles Coalition to End Hunger and Homelessness, Frank Tomborello. Lamp Community, Casey Haran. Community Clinic Association of Los Angeles County, Dana Noel. And I think, Diana, if you'd just say a few quick words, that would be great. And Dr. Gregerson as well.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Perry, and thank you for your dedication to this issue as well. Kaiser Permanente knows full well the difficulties and the complexities of providing care for the homeless community, but we're here today to acknowledge our community partners. And it is a privilege to be able to partner with these agencies who do the difficult job day in, day out of providing health care services for the homeless community. They are really the best of the community. We are able, through these grants, to provide for a variety of services, including improving care coordination of health services between hospitals, providers, and emergency shelters, expanding access to medical, dental, mental health, and addiction services, especially establishing a primary medical home, improving case management and integration with primary care, substance abuse, and mental health, improving access to specialty care, lab, and diagnostic services, improving shelter-based nutrition and health education, and expanding recuperative care projects. These are all long-term commitments for all of us. In addition, all of these partners are part of collaboratives, including the Skid Row Healthcare Initiative, Westside Council of Government, Community Discharge Planning Task Force, as well as the Hospital Association of Los Angeles County, Recuperative Care Coalition, and the Homeless Health Care Coalition.
Dr. Gregerson. Good morning. On behalf of JWCH and the other homeless health care providers and service agencies and grantees and our clients, I would like to express my gratitude to Kaiser Permanente for their ongoing support of our homeless programs. For many years, there was very little public or political awareness regarding the paucity of health care and other social services available to the homeless population in Los Angeles. The system of care that was available was highly fragmented and difficult to access, and many of the service providers and agencies in Skid Row, where the largest homeless population exists, all worked independently of each other. This has resulted in huge health disparities in the homeless, as is reflected in their higher incidence of chronic disease and lack of life and lower life expectancy. The providers in Skid Row have now begun working together to integrate services in our area so that we can reduce this fragmentation and produce better outcomes for our clients. Kaiser has played an instrumental role in facilitating this process of collaboration and integration. The grants that are being provided today by Kaiser Permanente cover a wide range of much-needed services, including primary care, recuperative care, outreach, mental health, substance abuse, case management, and discharge planning. All of these are necessary components of a comprehensive, integrated, and effective system of health care. The programs funded today by Kaiser are just a small component of the overall contribution Kaiser has made to the homeless. For example, Kaiser has also been providing the primary care clinics in Skid Row with free radiology services. Their physicians have also been donating their time and services by reading our X-ray films in their off-hours. Kaiser has also provided health education materials to our clients and assisted our clinics in implementing preventative care programs. They've also provided support for our providers by subsidizing our attendance at community and continuing medical education seminars and quality improvement forums. The list goes on. So again, I'd like to express my appreciation to Kaiser for your partnership with Skid Row and the homeless health care initiatives there. You've been present, you've been an active participant, and you've taken a leadership role. We value your relationship, and thank you for empowering us through your assistance and support for our cause. Thank you, Dr. Gregerson. And thank you very much to everybody. We'll take a picture in the back. All right. Thank you very much. And I will join all of you in the back in just a second so we can take a nice group photo. And our next presentation, thank you. Our next presentation will be on behalf of the Black Business Expo, and I think that Ms. Han, Mr. Parks, Mr. Wesson plan on joining me up here. And while they're coming, I think we're going to also be joined by Harold Hambrik and some very interesting folks here today who have brought something that I think everybody's going to like. We're joined by a number of chefs. Muriel Jones, Shabazz Restaurant, Derek Angus, Chef Derek, Chef Greg Doolan, Chef Adolf Doolan, Chef Desiree Edmonds, and this is respectively Shabazz Restaurant, Derek's Jamaican Restaurant, Doolan's Restaurants, Soul Kitchen, Chef Desiree Edwards from the Watts Coffee House, and Janet Curry, representing Lowry's Foods. And I think we're going to have a lovely experience in just a bit. It's a pleasure to be here today with representatives from the Los Angeles Black Business Expo and Trade Show. This year, the 18th Annual Black Business Expo will take place on September 22nd, 23rd, and 24th at the Los Angeles Convention Center, Tom Bradley Hall. The Expo and Trade Show started in 1998 as a means to provide exposure and to empower African-American-owned businesses so that they can grow and do outreach more to the community. The mission of the organization is to support the development and growth of African-American business enterprises. Approximately 40,000 businesses in the Los Angeles metropolitan area with revenue of over $4.5 billion through business promotions, consumer education, training, and financing. Over 450 corporate and small businesses from Los Angeles will exhibit products and services to well over 75,000 attendees. The sponsors include One United Bank, Farmers Insurance, City of Los Angeles, CoAmerica, Lowry's Food, Wells Fargo, Washington Mutual, Union Bank, Pacific Care, Abbott Vascular, L.A. Urban League, KGLH, KTYM, L.A. Watts Times, the Los Angeles Sentinel, The Wave, Los Angeles Weekly, Our Weekly, and many more. This is a fantastic event that celebrates the diversity and strength of our community here in Los Angeles. I hope that everyone will come and enjoy themselves immensely at the convention center this weekend and take part in what I am sure will be a memorable occasion. And as part of the festivities, some of our African-American-owned restaurants will be showcasing their delicious food. And as I stated earlier, many of the talented chefs and restaurateurs have joined us today to commemorate the upcoming expo, and I think they're going to tell you something special in a bit, but I suspect there's some samples in the back. So it's an honor to present the resolution in just a minute to Harold Hambrik, but I would like for my colleagues, Wesson, Han, and Parks to say a few words first, and then we'll do the official presentation.
Thank you. Yes, she is.
Start with the short people first.
We're starting with the short people and working our way up. Mr. Parks, he was concerned about height discrimination. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Perry for allowing me to participate in this presentation. I can't say enough about what has occurred over the past 18 years and the thousands and thousands of people who have been helped by this business expo. And I look forward to coming for the next 18 years and being a big supporter. Now, today it is something special because if you notice, we have been given these medals which make us honorary chefs. Now, as you can see, Mr. Parks is refusing to put his on because he knows no one will eat his food.
He has a big head.
It is an honor to be an honorary chef. That is, I think, a profession that is growing in the community, and individuals make a significant amount of money for that. I'm excited about this event, which is a three-day event. Over 55,000 people attended last year. So again, I want to commend you, and I want to commend Ms. Perry for having us all come up here to tell you that we really appreciate the great work that you do. So thank you very much.
Okay. The next tallest council member, Janice Han.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, and I'm very glad to be here to highlight the L.A. Black Business Expo and Trades Show this weekend. Among the great things that'll be here, the Black Enterprise Financial Workshops, there'll be an education summit, an entertainment summit, a fashion summit, and my favorite, something that's really important to me, is the Africa-US-A Trade Conference. I feel like that is what is so important and is sort of the missing link in the international trade industry, is connecting businesses right here in Los Angeles with the incredibly fast-growing international trade industry. The port of Los Angeles is only a few miles down the Harbor Freeway, and yet many of our businesses, particularly our women-owned and minority businesses, are not connected to the international trade industry. This will be one of the workshops that I think will have huge financial benefits in the future. I am pleased to be given the L.A. Black Restaurant Association's Medal of Honor. And you know, Herb, you made some comment about one of my initiatives recently, that it was half-baked. But I say, I am wearing this to say, and with all these chefs behind me, to say that I would not do anything that was half-baked. So, and I want to give a shout-out to my favorite chef, Desiree, who is, yeah, who is my favorite chef at the Watts Coffee Shop in Watts. If you haven't been there, you've got to go there. It was one of the restaurants that I highlighted on Eric Garcetti's Flavors of L.A. TV show, which is still running. The best food anywhere in Los Angeles, sorry, at the Watts Coffee Shop. So have a successful workshop or conference.
Thank you, Ms. Han. And our next speaker is Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I also, oh, that's it.
We did that purposely.
I also wanted to add my voice in support of the Black Business Expo. Having attended it over the last several years, it's probably one of the most positive things that go on in the city of L.A., to get an opportunity to meet so many constituents and people that actually provide businesses and services in our community. And we get a chance to get a taste of South Los Angeles and a variety of the chefs and the food. And so I can't say enough about Harold Hambrik and what he's done, that it's always, he's there. In fact, to give you an idea of how supportive he is of this program, he actually had a mild heart attack two years ago and sat down for about 20 minutes and came to the mild heart attack two years ago and sat down for about 20 minutes and came to the program and kept it going. And so that's why when I see him, I ask him every time, "How are you doing with your health?" Because I don't intend to give him CPR.
Or mouth-to-mouth.
And so, but I am pleased to see that he's keeping this going. And also, the chefs behind us, if you have an opportunity, they do a wonderful job in the community, small to medium-sized businesses providing a service and an outstanding tradition in food in South Los Angeles. Thank you.
So again, Chef Muriel, Chef Derek, Chef Greg, Chef Adolf, Chef Desiree, and Janet Currie for the Tasting Black Culture Food Event during this gathering this weekend at the Convention Center. And so it's an honor now to present this resolution to Harold Hambrik of the Black Business Expo and Trade Show that congratulates the expo on its 18th year in Los Angeles and declare that this September 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, Los Angeles Black Business Weekend here in the city of Los Angeles. Let's give Harold a big hand. Come on up and smile now. Now, you know Mr. Parks ain't of all your time now.
Oh, yes. I have one second.
Yeah, okay. That's all right. We'll go in the back and take a really nice one. Say a few quick words. We'll take some more in the back. It's front of our brand-new backdrop.
That's right.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, Harold.
Good morning or good afternoon. I don't know if it's morning or afternoon, but it's not ironic that I have the opportunity to stand before the council this morning. It was in 1781 that a group of about 44 individuals settled in El Pueblo, Los Angeles, and it just so happened that 26 of the people who settled in El Pueblo had African surnames. So we stand on a very strong history. It is only because of the shoulders that I stand on that you're able to see me behind this podium. I stand on the shoulders of Mayor Tom Bradley, P.O. Pico, Harriet Tubman, Frederick Douglass, Madam C.J. Walker, and many, many more. We really appreciate everything the mayor and this council has done to support the over 40,000 African-American businesses in L.A., and our intention is to continue to grow, provide good services, and have the right attitude. Thank you and see you at the expo.
All right. Let's warm in the back.
I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Labange for our next presentation.
I say that as close as I can get, John. Sorry about that there. John is an educator and a caring educator and also very involved with a program that will be out in Griffith Park, the Fourth Annual Roots and Shoots Peace Day coming up here on the 30th of September. I'm going to ask John to say a few words now and inform the public about this very important program.
I'd like to thank Councilman Labange for this time and for his support over the last three years, bringing this event to Griffith Park, along with honorary mayor of Griffith Park, Louis Alvarado. As everybody knows, nothing happens in Griffith Park without Labange and Louis knowing about it. Also, I'd like to thank the councilmen for putting forth a motion to make this a citywide special event. And I would like to thank councilperson Han for seconding that motion and providing Joan Milkyflora's Park for our first event four years ago, which you will see in the video which is coming up shortly. A special thanks to a couple of members of Councilman Labange's office who have bent over backwards for us, Young G. Kim and Patty Malone, along with the best park ranger in all of Los Angeles, Joe Drabinski, are making this event possible. Roots and Shoots, Roots and Shoots Peace Day is happening during a year of elections and at a time of war, and I want to make it very clear that this event is not about politics and not about protesting a war. What this event is about is about celebrating community service projects completed by Roots and Shoots Clubs and service learning in the city of Los Angeles. It is an opportunity to celebrate these projects, and it's through these projects that we can get peace in our community, peace in the environment, and peace with animals. And so through this event, we are celebrating around the world with Dr. Jane Goodall Roots and Shoots Clubs on the last Saturday of September, fly giant peace doves to commemorate her being named a messenger of peace by Kofi Annan four years ago. So I'd like to invite the entire city of Los Angeles to Griffith Park on September 30th for a day of inspiration, to be inspired by Dr. Goodall's presence and her words, and to celebrate the work of the youth in Los Angeles and making a difference in Los Angeles. We're also showcasing community partners such as Tree People, Generation Earth, the Caesar Chavez Foundation, and through Councilman Ed Reyes' office, the L.A. River Project is now being introduced to students to help them make a difference in the rebirth of the L.A. River. So without further ado, I'd like to show the video.
Show a little piece of this video of the work that they're doing. We certainly appreciate that. I know we're going to run this on our Channel 35.
... only by development at the expense of the environment and at the expense of our own great-grandchildren, then there is hope for the future. What you do every day really does make a difference.
So we hope to see everybody out there, and I know your staffs have been very helpful. The 30th of June of the Fourth Annual Roots and Shoots Peace Day Party.
30th of September.
30th of September.
Invite the city of Los Angeles, come out and see how you can make a difference.
Right, very good. You know why I said June, John? Huh? Okay, I don't know why I did that, but I made a mistake. So it's September 30th. Forgive me. Madam Clerk, strike that mistake, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our last presentation, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Parks for our final presentation.
And where's Bob Canfield, retired LAPD sergeant? How you doing?
Chief.
Colleagues, today we're here to honor Assistant CAO Pat Canfield, who's leaving the city of Los Angeles after 33 years of distinguished service. She graduated cumulata from University of Southern California in 1972. When I was going to school, my mother just wanted me to say, it was just glory I attended. She got cumulata at USC. After graduating from USC, she began her career in the city of L.A. in 1973 as a junior administrative assistant. I guess that's the entry level, okay? And then with the personnel department, then immediately promoting to personnel analyst. In '77, she joined the staff of the Office of the CAO as an administrative analyst and worked with four CAOs and rose to the position of Assistant CAO. In '94, she helped spearhead the disaster recovery program for the Northridge earthquake, resulting in a recovery of $1.1 billion in disaster grant reimbursement and was an integral member of the team that secured $140 million in FEMA funding for the City Hall rehabilitation project. In 2000, I appointed her as a position of Police Administrator, where she oversaw within the Police Department sworn and civilian development of the department's automated systems, police communications, and 911. We knew that she was such a star that we knew she wouldn't stay long. So in 2001, the City Controller recruited her as a chief deputy controller, where she was responsible for overseeing all operations in the Office of the City Controller. In 2002, she rejoined the CAO's office, management and staff, where she was responsible overseeing more than half the city's total budget in support of all city public safety departments. In addition, she has represented the city in countless difficult and challenging projects, including the Payroll Replacement Committee, L.A. Tax, and the X and 911 Steering Committee. She's earned the respect and admiration of her colleagues, employees she has supervised, and all city staff. Has been unquestionable integrity professionalism. Her intellect is something people have talked about for years. But what's most important is what people have identified is her grace under fire, as she's been before the city council on a number of occasions dealing with very sticky issues. And I'm just pleased to be able to give her her certificate from the city council after 33 years. Between she and Bob, what was it, 70 years? She and Bob served 70 years of service for the city of Los Angeles, and so that is quite a remarkable feat. But today, it's Pat's day, and I want to give you a certificate in behalf of the city council.
We do have a council member that'd also like to speak, so I have to take those pictures. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Smith to say a few words.
Well, thank you. I had the pleasure of working with Pat Canfield on many projects over the years, and Bob too, as well, on many occasions over the years in her role at CAO. But where I think she shined, where the people of L.A. have to say thank you, all the people of L.A. have to say thank you, was of course after the Northridge earthquake. In 1994, Mr. Burnson was selected as the chairman of the Recovery Committee. Pat Canfield headed up the recovery program for the CAO and did incredible job. And I think the proof is in the figures. If you look at Katrina today, almost half the people are still not in their homes. After the 1994 earthquake, in which we had tremendous dislocation, thousands and thousands of people out of their homes, we were able to recover, and as I recall the number, it's something on the order of 98.5% of our people were back in their homes within one year because of the amount of money we got in FEMA and the coordination that happened here because of Pat Canfield's work with the federal government, which was extraordinary. And L.A. shines, I think, in natural recovery from disasters above any city in America, what we accomplished here. And the unsung hero to that was Pat Canfield at the CAO's office, who coordinated all those monies and all those efforts to make sure that people got back in their homes, that business got back on track, and that the city government was able to fix the streets, the sewers, and all the things that happened. And plus, we got her Bob as a husband. So it was a good thing all the way around. And you talk about 75 years of service, Bob shows it, she doesn't. So, but they're a great couple. They're a dedicated couple of the city of L.A. But to the people of Los Angeles, particularly my district, Northridge and Granada Hills, all the North Valley, that suffered so much after the earthquake, people do not realize how much you, you're, single-handedly, the work you did, put them back in their homes and got us back on our feet as a city. So congratulations. God bless you for the people of our city, but my district in particular. God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I too want to offer my congratulations to you. You've been such a professional. You've come before council, you've come before committees, always the consummate professional. And looking at that crowd behind you, I don't know if you turn around and see how many people behind you, but this whole chamber is like empty except for who's standing behind you because of the impact you've had on their lives with the office. I know Bob, I've worked with him with the LAPD, then he went to emergency management with the city of Los Angeles. He's been retired many, many years. You've been supporting the family, and he's on that meager pension from the police. But it's a wonderful celebration when you can both retire and enjoy those wonderful years. You're still both in good health, and all the accomplishments that you've really done for the city of Los Angeles, what'd you say, 70 or 75 years? 70 years. I mean, that's, that family, just to be married in law enforcement that many years and to be working for the city that many years and not end up in the psycho ward, I mean, that's a tremendous benefit to both of you. As Chief Parks knows, the stress, that's in, right, Chief Parks? But now it's Councilman Parks. But really, in all seriousness, the respect that's shown to you by the people who worked that office for all those many, many years that are here recognizing this. And I tried to make your celebration last night, I got tied up, wasn't able to do it, the one you had here at City Hall. So I wish you well. I know you and Bob will enjoy retirement, well-deserved, on the happiness that you're going to fulfill the next few years and the benefit to all the people of Los Angeles who depended on you and us here in elective offices depended on you and your expertise. So God bless you well, and I join my colleague Greg Smith. I was living in Northridge at that time, so I know the devastation, I know how it all turned around. So thank you very much for all you've done on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, Pat. Wish you well.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
To Pat, to Bob, congratulations to this, to Bill, I'm sorry you're losing a great one. And I know I saw, when I was up at the tower yesterday by chance, all the love that was shown to you, Pat, and that's really remarkable because you worked real hard for the people of Los Angeles and always did the right thing. Congratulations to you for all your years of service. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would just like to add my two cents worth. Pat, it's been great to work with you, and Greg was right, you know, your efforts during the aftermath of that earthquake were pretty incredible, and you've had a long career in history, and you're one of those individuals who has made a difference in the city by what you've done in your advice and counsel. You've always been very direct with us and told us what we needed to hear, and I've appreciated that over years. So thank you very much for what you've done for the city, and we will really, really miss you. Congratulations.
Let me ask Bill Fugioke to come up and as her current boss to make some comments.
Thank you very much. I'll try to be very, very short, but Dennis asked, Councilman Zine asked, for the cameras to pan the crowd, to look at the folks that are standing behind us, and they are the staff of the CAO. And we've had a number of people who've left our office, but few have had a greater impact than Pat. The people are here out of their profound respect, admiration, and love for this woman. She has been an absolute role model in the truest sense and a mentor for not only the people behind us, but the people who have walked through the CAO. And you have CAO staff, we call them extended family members, who are in every single office of the city. We have your CLA, we have your executive officer for the CLA, both Jerry and Sharon, who were, who came from the CAO. The relationships she's developed speak to the type of woman she is. Not only is she the consummate professional, but for me, there's no one better. In our office, she represents the best, and she represents the brightest, and she represents who the CAO is. And so I want to miss her terribly. The city's going to miss her terribly because we talked about a couple of programs that she touched. You have no idea. Everything, literally everything, that you'll see throughout the city, at one point, this woman touched it. And the manner in which it was developed and the quality of which it exists is because of Pat Canfield. And so we will miss her terribly. She left her mark, she's mentored a lot of folks, there's a lot of Pat Canfields following her, but there will only be one Pat Canfield, and I miss her and I wish her the best.
And one more, one more council member would like to say something. Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise, for about 10 years, I was a staff person, working, for a good part of that, with the CED Committee. And we were essentially trying to sort out the federal funds that came through empowerment's own packages. And what I saw you deliver, how you delivered it, I mean, it's easy for many of us just to speak and say, yes, we're going to do this. But then when you look at the mountain of paperwork behind you and how you have to follow up, I remember one day, I don't know if you know this, but I was sitting in your office, I had to get some paperwork to you, it was probably in the mid-'90s, and I just saw an incredible professional approach to all of this turmoil, and you had it moving along and marching in such a way that just blew me away. And I just got one peek, and for you to do this for your career is something I think the Angelinos will never appreciate or know how to appreciate because of the intensity of that work. And I want to thank you for everything you've done for this city. Thank you so much.
Madam Speaker, I just want to thank Pat for one other thing. While all this was going on and we were waiting, we had a chance to recruit every member of the CAO's office, who's now wearing eighth district pins, so now we believe they belong to us now. So I just want to thank you, Pat, for that effort.
Thank you, Councilman Parks. And thank all of you, city council members, for your warm words and your very sincere compliments. I'll take them. I'll take them home with me, and I'll remember them forever. It's been my pleasure and my honor to work for the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank all of you, Bill Fugioke, who's been a really great boss and a great friend to me, and I want to thank the friends and colleagues of mine in the CAO's office. They've been tremendous. I call them my second family. I'm sure you understand why. We live together here for long, long hours. And most importantly, I want to thank my family. And most importantly, I want to thank my family. My husband, Bob, who's here, and my stepdaughter, Chris, who has two lovely children, two of my granddaughters, Kara and Caitlin, and they're the ones I'm going to be spending a lot of time with from now on. All of you have done so much for me and I want to thank you for having given me the opportunity to have this marvelous, interesting, educational, and very fulfilling career with the city of Los Angeles. Best wishes to all of you.
We are going, now going to go to public comment. If we could first go to Bruce Darian, who is out in our Valley offices.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Bruce Darian. My phone number is 310-428-8131. I'm here to talk about the Malibu Pier corruption and Malibu Canyon corruption and the pollution of Los Angeles River as I have in the past. From what I'm being told now, the mayor of San Luis Obispo has been indicted on fraud and that the Malibu Pier corruption is being widely talked about up in the Bay Area, which is good to hear. The lid is finally coming off of this scam. I know it's a Hollywood-backed cover-up here in Malibu being its backyard, but the public is well, well knowing of the fraud that's gone on and the many years of cover-up and corruption in Malibu Pier and related to governmental officials. Senator Boxer's office has responded to a letter that I wrote last month to herself, Senator Boxer, Senator Feinstein, Congressman Jane Harmon, and Congressman Roy Ballard, while I'm waiting responses from them as well. I think it's important that the city of Los Angeles come forward with election time coming around the corner, we can see what our officials have done and how they're responding to acts of governmental corruption, and it's imperative that the public take action. I request that the public continue to sign the petitions that we've sent to Congress. They can download them from malabupierscandal.com or you can call me personally at 310-428-8131. I appreciate the public support and look forward to seeing this justice be served here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patricia Nix. Patricia Nix. Zuma Dog.
Thank you so much. Well worth the wait. Glad to be here today and I enjoyed the ceremony quite much with a great culture that has been added. Reggaeton, a great cultural addition here. Like to give a shout out to Don Omar and Daddy Yankee, but right now I'd like to take the focus back onto term extension lengthening. I'd like the people to know now, believe me, council members, this is one time Zuma Dog's talking, you don't have to pay attention because you're not going to like it, it's really for the people here. Term limit lengthening. Two terms equals eight years. No pension, people. If they get that third term jammed through, correct me if I'm wrong, lifetime pensions, y'all. No wonder they're fighting this so hard. It was already thrown out in a court. This was thrown out by a court and they're fighting taxpayers' money to keep this term extension lengthening on the ballot. They want extra terms because they get a whole lot of extra financial perks and pensions. So not only are we spending taxpayers' money to fight for their own term extensions for an extra term, then it guarantees pensions and that's why they're fighting so hard. You had one judge who said that it was deceiving the verbiage and they changed the verbiage. Then you had another ruling that said, we got to take this whole thing off the ballot in, in general. But they fought and fought. Vote no on R. Zuma Dog is here, I've been coming here for months, you know Zuma Dog, I have one message to the community, no on R. We still have October 3rd, they might take it off the ballot entirely and then the votes won't count, but unless the shady politicians, they might get to the judges high up. So vote no on R. Vote no on R. Save the money for where it belongs. Now let me talk a little bit about special event fee waivers. City Hall's in a tizzy, y'all, because Zuma Dog stumbled upon something called special event fee waivers. They're stealing money from the city, giving it to commercial purposes. I don't want to see any more of these special event waivers on the agenda unless they're for public events, open to the public, in the community's interest for nonprofit organizations, not for a good magazine release party coming up on Tuesday. Zuma Dog, hooty hoo!
Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Doherty, followed by Lisa Marteano Palmer. Ms. Doherty. Yes, you want her to go first? Okay. Lisa.
Hi, Council. My name is Lisa Marteado Palmer. I'm here today to speak about our right to free speech. Just as El Grito did many years ago, a political town crier said, down with the bad government, up with the good government, and long live the Virgin of Guadalupe. I think our first amendment to free speech is very important. I noticed that in the daily news, they are not printing some of the dissenting viewpoints from the Van Nuys neighborhood council members. And so I'd like to say that we need to keep free speech alive in our government and to make sure that it's accessible to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty. Ms. Doherty followed by Sylvia Lynn Hawkins and then Candido Mares. Ms. Hawkins, Ms. Doherty is going to speak first and then you will be next.
Great, thank you.
Okay, she went, Ms. Hawkins, she's asking if you'd go before her. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Hawkins. Animal cruelty would not continue in any part of California. These public people of 70% of women's and 30% of men's are trying to destroy all of our wilderness, forests, land, to find the wisest animals like horses, crocodiles, fishes, snakes, ducks, zebras, rhinos, dinosaurs. To say that they are the wise people than the animals, after capturing animals to use for their juice and not on sale for the public people or the human being people, so that they can remain a age student, so that they can stay in the United States of America illegally. These animals are not bought. They are stolen from California wilderness and forest areas. All that cheat, there will be full penalties. All that cheat will be destroyed by all animals. All animals will win all wars of Hawkwell Eight Military. Again, the animals are fighting back. They are no longer allowing medicine to heal the people. I am protecting animals more than the people because now they're using the animals for healing, for medication, and now for food. And it is illegal to con in the United States of America. Therefore, we must again be very aware that the animals are now attacking the people, Amifer earth and the hell animals. Thank you very much. My name is Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Thank you very much. I had some papers I was going to pass out to you, but since I see there are only about, let's see, one, two, three, four, five council members here, I guess I'll hold them. I'm here, I'm really sorry, I missed, there's another one.
There is. There's.
But all it shows is simply what the Recreation and Parks Department gave me two years ago when we were on the agenda in that department. And it shows that the front steps are circled and then there are dark dotted lines leading out to the end of the wing and around the backside. And at the bottom it says, this is a path of travel for disabled access. Since the powers that be, the five people who are most involved in being against equal access at the front four doors of that building, since they were not able to get around this situation, they are now saying that for the first three years, first year, excuse me, all of us, all of us will have to go around to the one door on the backside of the west wing and go into the observatory in that manner and go down the whole wing to get to the front four doors on the inside. This is something every child in this city is taken up to that observatory. And Griffith, Griffith, what is his name, Jenkins, Griffith, he meant for everybody to go into that wonderful front door entrance, into that beautiful rotunda. We need sloping walkways there and we can do it. And if Brenda Levin and Associates is unable to come up with an alternative plan, then we need to hire a different architect and get a plan that will be universal design. And I was here last Saturday when the mayor was talking about this city being so great. If we don't have that front entrance accessible for everybody, we will not be great anymore. Too much of the world comes to see us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Candido.
Good morning, Madam President. Candido Mares, returning from Ireland and New York City. I would like to pass out this information, if I might, sir. The reason why I was in New York City is to visit again the Manhattan Community Court. As you know, Madam President, we have a community court in Van Nuys. We have struggled for the last four years. When you go back to Manhattan to see that they were the first court and we were the fifth court, and you see the difference between one court that is supported and one that's not, it's amazing. When you take a look at the way crime has been driven down because of the involvement of the, the council people in that area and the courts and the fact that crime, quality of crime issues are dealt with through the community court, it's unbelievable what can take place. Dublin, I went to Dublin because they too had individuals go to Manhattan and take a look at the community court because now Dublin is experiencing a lot of graffiti and gang issues, and so now they're bringing the community court there. Just recently, Zev Yaroslavsky allocated over $500,000 for the San Monica Community Court. We're only getting $50,000 for Van Nuys. The community court is something that can go to every district. So I hope that we can possibly get more money for our community court. It's not just for Van Nuys, it's for the entire city. We are one city, one people from Chatsworth to San Pedro. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Candido. I'd like to, now, Madam Clerk, I think we do have a special agenda today.
Yes, Madam President, there is.
We could recess the regular agenda and go to their special agenda.
Cardenas Grohan, Weiser Labange, Padilla Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosalina Smith, Weiss Westen, Zine Garcetti, 11 members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. And we just have one item, is that correct?
No, there are six items. The first item is an item for which the report is submitted and it actually is a communication from chair and member of E E Committee, and I believe there's a card on that item and it would require.
There is. We will call that special and if we could just, are there any specials on the remainder of the items? And two through six on the special agenda. If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Those items been approved. We'll go back to item number one. Would you like to hear the public comment card first or, okay, Mr. Bill Lewis?
Good morning, Council. Here we are again. We met in the committee a couple days ago to discuss this contract that's coming forward from the department. Again, they've, the department has failed to meet their obligations under Appendix B of our M O U. This is a consistent problem. We started talking on this contract back in March. In July, they sent us a letter saying the discussion and near agreement that we had reached no longer applies. It's an ongoing problem with this. Just yesterday, we requested documents on another contract. The department said, we don't have to give them to you. It basically makes Appendix B of our M O U ineffective. We're asking that you send this contract back to Water and Power, let them know that they need to discuss this stuff with us, meet their obligation under Appendix B, and, and move forward. We need to stop coming to the council to force that too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Labange.
I'd like to ask staff to come to the table and explain why we are here at this point. And members, this is extremely important to us in order to move forward and improve what is a very dangerous situation in Hollywood Hills where there may be without water if the failure of a hillslide slope. This is a result of the 2005 storms and I heard the representative's words, I know there work needs to be done on that matter, but work needs to be done to serve the people and get these people working on this. May I ask the department to report?
Barb Garrett with the Department of Water and Power. Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. This is a, an extension to an existing contract. There are $1.5 million remaining in the original $2.9 million contract due to judicious management of that contract. The work is threefold. One is for expert services. We are embarking on concurrent activities in the Department of Water and Power, doing seismic retrofit of our dams, installing our water mains, our, our large water mains to comply with the EPA rules, covering reservoirs, looking at landslide areas and trying to address those issues.
Solving the landslide problems.
Yes. And we need technical experts and third-party review for a number of those activities, both for us and to give the divisions of dam safety of the state also a comfort level that is their preference. In addition to that, we have drilling activities where we go out and drill to test soils. And thirdly, we have what we call peak services. So when we have concurrent activities, sometimes we don't have enough core staff. As we're embarking upon these significant construction programs in the department, we've been ramping up our staff for geotechnical services. Last year, we added three staff. This fiscal year, we have eight additional staff and we're looking at our opportunities next year in light of our growing activities that are happening. With regard to the union's issue of Appendix B, I would like to respond. Appendix B has a couple of requirements. One is that we notify the union of our contract. They have five days to respond. Within that five days, they can request a meeting and then the department has five days to meet with them. After that, we can cut off discussions. It only requires one meeting. However, in good faith, the department can extend those discussions under mutual agreement and try to reach agreement. If we cannot reach agreement, we can indicate that we have not reached agreement and the union then has five days to initiate expedited arbitration. The Appendix B further requires that that arbitration be completed within 30 days. We notified the union on February 8th of the contract. They asked for a meeting on February, on February 15th. We met with them on March 16th. We provided them information on March 6th that they requested via email. We had further discussions with them on April 4th, April 28th, May 1st, May 4th, May 18th, June 29th, and August 4th. It became apparent that we were not going to be able to reach agreement. Their request was that we fill all of the positions before we hire these contractors. A number of the activities to be completed by these contractors cannot be done in-house and the peak work we need to complete and to not, to wait until we had staff would just mean that we have a greater backlog and we're not moving forward with these very important projects, both for public health and safety. We notified them in writing on July 28th that we were moving forward and gave them the opportunity to utilize their rights under Appendix B for expedited arbitration. They did not take that opportunity. They wrote us a letter. We wrote them back on August, at the end of August, telling them that we were waiting 30 days and August 30th was the day. We were in our board on the 5th. This contract is very important and it's ready to expire and the union did not come and speak to our board about any issues related to Appendix B.
All that in mind, we want you to work with the union on issues and make sure there's communication. We hear too often, maybe there's not enough communication, but what's important before us right now is an opportunity to solve problems up in the aqueduct system and in, in Lake Hollywood area, which has been closed due to the storms of 2005. And I thank you for the help of Bill Fujioka and his office in guiding us our way and the engineers from the Department of Water and Power greatly on this. So, Madam President, I ask for an eye vote, but I know the great chair of committee.
I was just going to call on Ms. Perry.
I know you were trying to do this before I got back in here, but I'm back.
Ms. Perry.
Yes, and I had a pretty, pretty good line there in committee, didn't I? Summing it all up, all right? I reluctantly decided to move it out of committee because I realized the, the need to get the contract done. But what I did note is the pattern that keeps appearing and reappearing in the committee of what appears to me to be an inability to resolve fundamental issues. We had had a very long discussion about the possibility of expedited arbitration because we're up against the wall on timing. We had to go with this option. I felt very uncomfortable because, you know, we're basically dealing with facts that are unverified, have no mechanism through the committee process when we're operating under such a. such a tight deadline to do that. So to try and correct that situation, I have asked the Chief Legislative Analyst Office to work with me and the committee to create some strategy to stop doing this over and over and over again. So while I concur with Mr. Labange, I did so reluctantly and look forward to having a very thorough discussion here in council and in committee on how we're going to create a new model for dispute resolution and see if we can't move forward in the future on an even playing.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I agree wholeheartedly with that. The item is now before us. Madam Clerk, you can open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 11 ayes. That item's been approved. We will adjourn the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting, Madam Clerk, and our first item?
All the items called special were called special for cards and they're items 20 through 25, and they are all either track maps or parcel maps.
Thank you very much. The first card we have is on item number 20, Zumadog. Mr. Zumadog?
Thank you. I was just meeting with a constituent back there, and so let me first explain what these track maps are. We see a lot of them, and it's before you have any type of project, a building or something, this is what they use to draw the legal document to get it through. So this is about, this ties into the Planning Division, the Planning Department, what's happening throughout the city with things like these track maps for these developments. We have something called the Planning Department. They are there to stick up for the rights of the tenants. For example, let's say you have an apartment complex and they want to turn it into, excuse me, I'm trying to speak here, can I have a little bit, I mean, please? What happens is, let's say you have some apartments like at Witcel or whatever, and you got like a lot of tenants, and they want to turn it into a condo conversion. Well, the Planning Department sticks up for tenant rights. However, what's happening in this city is the Planning Department, the developers who are supposed to stick to these Planning Department guidelines, they sidestep the guidelines, they don't pay the tenants what they're supposed to, we're using 1980 payment standards anyway. Then, for example, this apartment complex in Witcel in Van Nuys or somewhere, I think it might be Ms. Grohl's district, 20 tenants kicked out without getting paid. It's like the new Lincoln Place. And I'm being very distracted over here, I'm being very distracted. So what I'm saying is, council members, amen. Okay, I'm distracted because they're talking.
Speak to the Chair.
Please, go ahead.
Chair, could you, okay. Anyway, the point is, can we have, the council members need to stick up for the tenants because the Planning Division is there for a reason. The developers are running rampant, they're not paying the tenants what they want, they're kicking them out without pay, they're old standards anyway. What I'd like to ask the council members, because we have a lot, I get a lot of discussion about this. I'm not a homeowner, I don't know squat about this. The reason I'm talking about it means there is outrage in the city. Stick up for the tenants, don't let the developers run rampant, have them pay what they're supposed to, enforce the rules. Possible reelection for everybody. Thank you, Zumadog, for City Council.
Mr. Zumadog, well, first we have that item before, she's on the next one as well. Madam Clerk, open the roll on number 21, close the roll, excuse me, 20, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Item 21, Mr. Zumadog.
Okay, this happens to be about a track map as well, so since I was very distracted and was stuttering a lot and didn't have it on, let me say it again for TV 35 so I could post this on the net quite effectively. What track maps are for, ladies and gentlemen, is before you want to have any type of new construction, new buildings or whatever, the track map kind of shows what the development's going to be, then it's taken to some legal department and they draw up the documents and then they make it happen. So the thing is, the Planning Department is there for tenants' rights. For example, Lincoln Place, we know that they all got bamboozled and weren't paid what they were supposed to, and you had little old ladies kicked out of their lifetime homes onto the street. Well, now there's a new project, the Witcel project, Witcel Apartments, they're going to be turning those into condos, and what I understand is 20 people were already kicked out without pay. I would like to-
Excuse me, Madam President, this agenda item has to do with the track map number 60146 lying southerly of Burbank Boulevard.
Yeah. So I was just trying to use that as-
The Speaker should keep to the topic.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to tie it in, how the fact that we have these maps for projects and we have the Planning Department, so regarding this project, I hope the Planning Department, they will be making rules that must be stuck to for the tenants and anybody that has to get pushed off to the side. I understand the city has to redevelop, they have to restoration, we need to keep Los Angeles a world-class city. The problem is, the developers, they have so much money and they just cheap out and just stick it to the people, and then it all blows up in the face. They could easily pay the money they're supposed to to relocate these tenants. Council members, I would please ask you to stick up for your constituents. When they're getting steamrolled by these developers with all the money, please, let's not pay them by 1980 standards. Let's raise the standards that we're supposed to pay them in the amount of money. Let's make sure that also the developers sidestep a lot of these Planning Department rules. They just find ways to sidestep it, then they just don't even do anything anyway, and what I'm hearing is the council members are not sticking up for the tenants. I'm not saying that we have to shut down the city or that, you know, the developers, you know, have to pay millions to these people. Just pay them the reasonable standard, make them stick to it, and let's all have a happy day.
Thank you. I'd like to have that item now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Next item is item number 22, Mr. Zumadog. This is regarding Stagg Street and Oakdale Avenue.
Yes, I'd like to repeat what I said, but maybe somebody could tell me, Stagg Street. Anyway, I'd like to just make people aware that when you see track maps, be very aware because that means a new development is coming. It means probably people are going to be displaced, you know, forced out of their homes, which is perfectly understandable because, you know, like, again, we need the city to restoration to be a world-class city, and I support a lot of this development, not all of it. However, when we do make these deals with the contractors, please make sure that we are sticking up for the tenants' rights as well because we're using 1980 standards to relocate a lot of these people.
Madam President, this item has to do with approval of final track map. Track map number 63168 lying southerly of Stagg Street. The Speaker can be requested to speak to the topic or be ruled out of order.
Okay, and I'd like to, maybe somebody can explain to me, this is something that's going to have to go through the Planning Department, correct? Once the track map is established?
No, the track, just to explain-
This is the final step.
The track map has gone through the Planning and Land Use Committee and come through here, through the Planning Department. Sometimes it's related to condos, sometimes it is related to other kinds of projects.
Okay, well, I will just wrap up and then I'll waive the rest of them. Mr. Labange is going to talk to me, which is what I appreciate. So just for all these projects we're doing, all types of things, make sure the tenants, when you have to kick people out to make it happen, stick up for the constituents, make sure they get the money they're supposed to. If you're hearing complaints that they're not, like at Witcel kicking out 20 people, you know, do something about it. These contractors have plenty of money, they try to cheap out to kick old ladies out for $1,000, they could easily make it $20,000 and everybody would be happy. So, you know, it's just greed. It's all about greed. Don't let the city be too greedy. We need to just tighten up a little bit. There's no room for these champagne wishes and caviar dream projects anymore. The city's in financial crisis, so please, stop robbing the city blind, pay the tenants what they want. Zumadog for City Council. I'll see you, Mr. Labange, in a moment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Since Mr. Zumadog has waived the rest of his speaking cards, we will take item 22, 3, 4, and 5 before us. Excuse me, Madam Clerk? Okay. All three, excuse me, all four items are now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
As we posted and referred.
The Excuses on the desk, Councilmember Smith requests to be excused September 19th to arrive at 11:00 a.m. and Friday, November 3rd for personal business, those meet council policy.
He will be excused.
Council President Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, November 17th and Friday, December 1st for city business, those meet council policy.
He will be excused.
And there's a change on a request from Councilmember Cardenas to change the request to the entire meeting of September 27th for city business, that meets council policy.
He will be excused.
And Councilmember Labange requests to be excused Wednesday, September 20th for city business, that meets council policy.
He will be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements today, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several events going on in the 8th District. First of all, on this evening, Friday, September 15th, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., they will have a Celebration of Life Cancer Ministry that's going to be held at the UL AAC Building at 601 Grace Avenue in Inglewood. Also, next week, the Greater Los Angeles African American Chamber will have their monthly membership mixer Thursday, September 21st, 5:30 p.m. at the La Frontera Gallery, 3551 West 43rd Street in Le Mertre Park. And also, the Crenshaw Chamber will have a meeting on September 20th at the Baldwin Hill Shopping Center in the Community Room, and that will be at 6:00 p.m. to 7:30, talking about home care helpers. And then, we mentioned earlier, again, denounce the Black Business Expo, September 22nd through the 24th at the Convention Center.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. Council President, I just wanted to remind everyone once again that tonight, September 15th, the celebration and the music will start on Spring Street, right here on the steps of City Hall, and people can gather, as we've closed off the street, they can gather on Spring Street between First and Temple, and the festivities will start at 7:00 p.m. and will culminate in a 9:00 p.m. ceremony, 14 minutes and 34 seconds long, by our Consul General Beltran reminded us today at 9:00 p.m. tonight. And everyone is welcome, it's free to the public, and it's going to be a wonderful opportunity as it's been last year and many years in the past, a very wonderful celebration of culture and to share in that wonderful Day of Independence by our neighbor to the South Mexico. I want to welcome everyone once again tonight, Friday, 7:00 p.m. Start the festivities and it culminates in the ceremony at 9:00 p.m. on Spring Street in front of City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Ms. Hahn?
Once again, the annual Lobster Festival being held at the Port of Los Angeles, Friday night, Saturday, Sunday. Come on down to the Port of Los Angeles and enjoy wonderful lobster dinner, as well as good music and other opportunities to shop and play games and have a great time. Anyway, it's one of the greatest, biggest lobster festivals anywhere, and it is at our very own Port of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. You had another announcement, Mr. Parks?
I've mentioned USC, one of our universities, is having their first home game Friday, I mean Saturday at 5:00 p.m., and we handed out posters to all of those USC fans, mark December 2nd, "It's a Dark Day for UCLA." So I just wanted to bring that up.
We'll see. Yes, Ms. Hahn?
I know we should all be USC fans tomorrow, and I will be, but, because I'm going to the game, but playing for Nebraska as a freshman is a young man from Watts-
Who's that now?
-who graduated from Jordan High School, actually was on the gang injunction list, turned his life around, played basketball at Jordan High School, Nebraska gave him a full scholarship to play football. Ricky Therese will be there, number, I think he's number-
What's his name?
Ricky Therese.
Therese.
I think his number is 35, and I'm going to get an opportunity to go down there and say hello to him. But that is a success story from this community, first of all, to graduate from Jordan High, very few kids are graduating these days, and then to go on, turn his life around and play for Nebraska. So except for him, I know, except for him, I'll be cheering for USC tomorrow.
On that note-
Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
-on the note of football, and I'd just like to say, I don't know how much longer I'm going to be able to boast and say this, but UCLA so far has a better record this year than USC. We have one more, we have one more, one more official win on the record in the official season than USC.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for that support.
Appreciate what we can.
Just to add to, what's great about college football is, from Nebraska, there's a lot of people coming and out, they don't even have tickets to the game, they just want to be part of the scene. They're playing at the Great Memorial Coliseum, where it's going to be very exciting, and Game Day's coming, the college football Game Day with all the people from ESPN, so it's going to be an exciting weekend. And there's bus shuttles from Central Los Angeles down Figueroa Street, so if you want to avoid the traffic.
Thank you.
I have a correction, I have a correction, Mr. Parks. It's Ricky Thanas, and he's number three. So look for the, look for the three.
He gave us another reason to root against USC.
I know.
Any other announcements? Okay, Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Rosenthal.
Yep. Please join in volunteering for the Hill, the Bay's Coastal Cleanup Day this upcoming Saturday, September 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. We encourage you to volunteer at any of the cleanup day locations across the city and county valet. I'd like to bring your attention to the two cleanup locations occurring along the Los Angeles River. One location is Elysian Park at the confluence of the Royal Seco and Alley River. Parking is available at Home Depot, that's 497 North Sampedown Road. The second location is at the Sepulveda Basin in Van Nuys. The cleanup will occur south of the river on Balboa Boulevard between Victory and Burbank. So welcome all, it's a great way to spend a nice Saturday morning, clean up our environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you, Madam President. And if anybody feels like doing some real exercise this weekend, instead of sitting there as a couch potato, at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday at the Venice Pier, with Jane Harmon, who's going to be there, cleaning up Venice Pier, we're going to be picking up the trash. Then at 12:30, we're going to the Jungle over there in Playa del Rey, and at 12:30, we're going to also be doing a cleanup. In fact, you might not know this, but the Jungle Cleanup is the oldest community cleanup day in Los Angeles. It was started many, many years ago, and I was there last year, and I'm looking forward to it this year. It's at Trolley Way and Sunridge Streets in Playa del Rey around 12:30, if you feel like bending down, picking up some stuff, and feeling good about yourself. Two cleanups in my district this weekend on the 16th. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Do we have adjourned motions? We do. If everyone could please rise.
I'd like to pay tribute to former Texas Governor Ann Richards-
Yes.
-who passed away on Wednesday night after a battle with cancer. She was a well-known national political figure. She really came of her own in the 1988 Democratic National Convention. She was the Texas State Treasurer, and she had a great quote about the elder Bush, and she said, "Poor George, he can't help it, he was born with a silver foot in his mouth." And that made her famous, and she went on to become governor of Texas two years later, and she served as the chairwoman of the Democratic Convention that nominated Bill Clinton. However, there was a comeuppance, and she actually ran for a second term only to be defeated by the younger George Bush. So it came around to her. But, you know, she fought for expanded rights for women and minorities, she helped streamline government, and she helped reform the education system. She was just an outspoken woman who really said what needed to be said. I had the opportunity of meeting her at one time, but I think one of the things that Ann Richards did certainly was for every girl growing up, not only in Texas but everywhere else. When they looked at Ann Richard as one of the first women governors of Texas, they saw that they too could aspire to a political office. She was a wonderful woman, and we will miss her very much. She survived by her children, Cecile, Daniel, Clark, and Ellen, and she has eight grandchildren.
And before you go on, Ms. Hahn, I'd just like to add to that, because I had the pleasure of meeting her in Texas after the floods when I was working for Henry Cisneros. And she was a hands-on governor, and you're right that she gave hope to many young women, and she used her humor many times to be able to get people on her side. And she also used her humor, she talked about, you know, getting women elected, and I think she talked about, you know, women's place is in the dome of the Capitol, not in the House, and she had so many wonderful little stories, and she came and visited Los Angeles, I think, within the last year and met with many of us. And she was still interested in contributing, giving to, giving back, and it was really a pleasure to have known her, and she is a big loss for those of us two that are elected officials who looked up to her as a mentor. Mr. Rosenthal, do you want to add something?
She, I've known her too over the years, and she had, as you just said, Madam President, an incredible sense of humor. She was extremely courageous, there was nothing that she feared, and she was a role model for all of us, women as well as men who believe in the democracy and integrity, filled people with courage that stand up for what they believe. But it was her sense of humor that kept us going, which we as elected officials need to have- to have a sense of humor considering all of the things we deal with every day, and I'll remember her for that sense of humor more than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you mind if you do all members, Ms. Hahn?
I have one more. I was very sad to pick up my daddy breeze this morning and read of the death of Sandy Walker, who was the wife of the former mayor, Dan Walker, who died just recently. It was quite a shock to read. You know, you can read all about Sandy, if you would like, in her obituary, but for me, Sandy certainly was the quiet, gentle spouse of, you know, a very visible politician in the South Bay, Dan Walker. And every time I would go to an event, whether it was, you know, Independent Cities or Contract Cities or some seminar where we were all there, if Sandy was there, no matter what current fight Dan and I might be involved in, and we were involved in several, Sandy would always make an opportunity to come over and say hello to me. We would talk about other things, and she always was warm and hospitable and always made me feel like she was a friend of mine. She was involved in arts, cultural affairs, she worked behind the scenes, she was a very generous woman towards charities in the South Bay. So, it's tough, I'm sure, to be the wife of an elected official, but Sandy did it with grace and real patience and dignity, and I will personally miss Sandy Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, I'll second. Any other adjourned motions? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll. This meeting is adjourned.